Time is now six thirty seven P M. Calling this meeting to order. Present, we have Councilmember Yarborough, Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor Pro Tem Mize, Councilmember Cornelsen, and Councilmember Hodges. A quorum is present. Today, Cam Bellamy from Watershed School will be doing our invocation, and we'll be doing the pledge after that.
Dear Lord, thank you for letting us all be here today and help us to learn and grow. We dedicate this time to you, so please help everyone to keep their focus on you. Colossians three seventeen says, "Whatever you do, whether in word or deed, do it all in the name of the Lord Jesus, giving thanks to God the Father through him." Thank you for blessing our time together and give everyone the wisdom and words that you have taught us. We give you all the honor and glory, and in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. First item is public input. Nobody signed up. Moving on to mayor and council reports, presentations, and proclamations. Ms. Angie?
Mayor and council, I'm pleased to bring you tonight the third quarter Employee of the Quarter. Want to read a couple of nominations first. The first one is, there's so many things I was looking for when I was trying to decide who I was going to select for an Employee of the Quarter. A couple of those are integrity, respect, and work ethic. Another one talks about this person being outstanding in their work ethic. They come in every day with a go-get-'em attitude. They treat the fellow employees with respect and always helps find a solution to the problems that they have. And the last one says that he stands out every day, and he is a leader and a great mentor, and no doubt he will be nominated again and again. Your Employee of the Third Quarter for the City of Godly is James Cook. And Mayor, if you don't mind, I have another thing I'd like to make a presentation on.
Yes, ma'am.
So you all know that Chief Cantrell's last day here will be on the twenty-fifth, which is Sunday. And at Christmas time, we're going to be talking about years of service. And I just didn't want him to leave here without being recognized for his years of service and dedication that he's given to this city. And so Matthew, if you don't mind coming in, I'd like to present him with a certificate of appreciation for ten years of dedicated service to the City of Godly from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty-four, signed by me and the mayor on this day.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Approving, discuss possible action approval of the Godly City Council minutes from the regular meeting held on August sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the minutes from the special call meeting on August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and the department reports from police, fire, public works, and the city administrator.
Yeah, so I don't know that that's a question for me, but, uh, yeah. Yeah, so when these developments come in and get annexed in, we inherit part of those roads. And to be honest with you, I've not really thought about renaming them. But I tell you what, how about I do a little research, and I'll see you in a couple of weeks at the next meeting and maybe have some more information for you?
All right.
Thank you.
I mean, they're in the city, so we ought to have a city name other than County Road.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think there's going to be a lot to that, because it goes to the county road right after that, but, um, but you know what? We can certainly do the research and get you an answer one way or the other.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve, oh, sorry?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to apologize. My report is not in here. I've been tied up for two weeks with the auditors. You'll get it tomorrow. I'll send it to you by email tomorrow.
Brittany used to get ready to say something a couple times?
I was just gonna say, I'll make those changes to the minutes and resubmit them and resend them out to you guys, to you all.
Make a motion to accept item or the consent agenda in its entirety with the changes as per Secretary Gross.
Have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Councilmember Hodges to accept the consent agenda with the corrections from Secretary Gross. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 No.
Aye.
Passes four to one. Going on to item seven, public hearings. Item A, hold a public hearing on rezoning from R two residential multifamily to C R, commercial retail, on plus or minus five point four one six acres located at three oh one North State Highway one seventy-one.
Mayor and members of the council, you really haven't met me yet, but my name is Morris Schwanki, and I've been helping the city do some mapping work and also doing some reviews of some zoning cases and plaids. And I'm here just to make a little short presentation on this site. And you have had some of the information that's in your packets already. But that's the site right there that we're looking at. The southern, two-thirds of it is in the flood plain. And this is, like I said, three oh one Highway one seventy-one. And this is a survey of the property. And this is what the area looks like. There's an existing house that's on the north end, but the entire request and survey go all the way down to the middle of the flood plain that we have there. This is what the site looks like from the road ground level. And I wanted to bring this map because this is where the tract is, right here. And right now, it's zoned as multifamily. And it is, like I said, the southern half of it is in the flood plain. And this is what the proposal is, is to put a restaurant there. And they're currently showing a McDonald's there with an access, a couple access points out to State Highway one seventy-one. And this is your master land use plan. And it's identifying the area, which is right here, as a commercial corridor. It's not showing it as multifamily. And so their request is actually in keeping with your master land use plan. And that's really just a short presentation. It's in line with your master land use plan. And if you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer. If not, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At six forty-seven P M., I will open the public hearing for any comments. Anyone? Close the public hearing at six forty-seven P M. On to item B, discuss and adopt ordinance zero eight dash two zero two four dash one two one, rezoning from R two residential multifamily to C R, commercial retail, on plus or minus five point four one six acres located at three oh one North State Highway one seventy-one.
Make a motion to approve item B as written.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Mize to approve item B as written. Further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero to adopt ordinance zero eight dash two zero two four dash one two one, rezoning from R two residential multifamily to C R, commercial retail, on plus or minus five point four one six acres located at three oh one North State Highway one seventy-one. New business, discuss and take possible action to accept the resignation of interim police chief Matthew Cantrell. Ma'am?
This is just following through with the fact that we all know Matthew will be leaving, so we'll need you to accept his resignation for the record. And then the next item is for you to name an interim effective on the twenty-sixth, because he will be here through the twenty-fifth. So they're just going to go hand in hand, because there are things in the police department that you will have to have an interim police chief to take care of, and someone has to have a certification through T. Cole in order to do that.
Someone has to have what?
T. Cole certification in order to do that.
Do you have a recommendation who could take that position?
I would let Sergeant Arbanoff handle it. He's been taken care of most of the time, you know, when he had to go to school and stuff like that, so, um, there's just reports and things that are required by the state that take an interim police chief's signature on it, so. But that's, I'd like for you to formally accept his resignation. That way, we got that on the record, and then to name someone.
Motion to accept item A as written.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Mize to accept item A as written. Further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Item B, discuss and take possible action on naming an interim police chief effective August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sergeant Arbanoff with the recommendation of our city administrator to the interim police chief effective August the twenty-sixth.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Rodriguez and a second by Councilmember Hodges to name Sergeant Arbuthnot as the interim police chief effective August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Item C, discuss and take possible action to approve a hearing to consider the proposed tax rate for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year, no new revenue tax rate of point five one four four five six.
Motion to approve item C as written.
I'll second. We just need to include the date of the, the date and time of the public hearing for the rate. Angie, I think we proposed that for September third.
September seventeenth.
September seventeenth.
Like to amend my motion. Does that require a second? I don't remember.
Yes, because the second was made. It would actually be two separate motions that have to vote.
Okay. Like to amend my original motion to include the date of nine seventeen along with the approval of item C as written.
I'll second.
Time two? Eighteen thirty?
Six.
Eighteen thirty?
Sixty thirty?
Okay.
At two hundred West Railroad.
At two hundred West Railroad, Godly, Texas, seven six oh four four.
Got it.
Eight one seven thirty-nine.
It feels like that, doesn't it?
I seconded that. I will second that. I do second that.
I have a motion to amend the original motion by Councilmember Yarborough, second by Mayor Pro Tem Mize, to add in September seventeenth at six thirty P M. at two hundred West Railroad, Godly, Texas, for the public hearing. Further discussion on that? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Now, back to the original motion. Have a motion by Councilmember Yarborough and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Mize to approve the hearing to be set on September seventeenth at six thirty P M. at two hundred West Railroad, Godly, Texas, for the proposed tax rate for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year, no new revenue tax rate of point five one four four five six. Further discussion? Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. On to item nine for discussion. Item A, discussion regarding Steve Story Day. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I'm turning that over to Angie and...
Mayor, council. Discussion has been had about doing something to honor our firefighter Steve Story. And so what we came up with was a date of July nineteenth, which was his last day of service with the city, and doing a proclamation for Steve Story Day for that date. Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to...
This is a discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
What does that entail having a Steve Story Day?
It's just a proclamation from the city. There's, we would likely, if the council decides to do that, we'd likely have a family member present a certificate for that particular day. We discussed it. It's not something that we're going to try to do every year, just a one-time thing.
Can I give staff direction to get a proclamation and bring it back to the council for approval?
We'll have it at the next meeting. We just wanted to make sure we have the correct, the date that you really left.
Would the proclamation be for the next meeting or would it be for... Give guidance to set this up for July of next year for the proclamation?
Oh, okay, for July of next year. Okay, I didn't know if we were going to just proclaim it so that we would do it next year. Okay, got it.
Thank you, chief.
Item B, discussion regarding increasing the city administrator's spending authority. Mayor Pro Tem Mize?
Okay, so the last couple of meetings, Angie has had to bring some things that regardless needed to be paid, and they were nowhere close to the Texas spending authority limit. I want to say that they were both under thirty or right around thirty thousand dollars. So I would like to talk about raising the cap at our next meeting possibly. It's my understanding it has to be done through ordinance, correct? In order for us to raise it?
Is it the spending plan ordinance?
I'll have to look back and see. It'll be ordinance or resolution. It depends on how you adopted it initially.
So I'd like to open it up for discussion tonight to see if we would like to go ahead and give her full authority, if we'd like to keep her authority where it's at, or if we would like to just increase it all.
You said full authority is fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand, the state statute.
Forty-nine nine nine nine. My opinion is, has nothing to do with Angie. It has to do with being open and transparent, bringing stuff in front of the council, bringing stuff in front of the citizens. So that's why I argued about it, why I wanted, why I argued or talked about it the first time that way. It's just that every, I want to keep the city ran by the city council, and I want it to be open and transparent. That's how I see keeping the city open and transparent by bringing bills to us. That's my thoughts.
I would be, personally, I'd be happy with these larger bills if they're brought back, let her pay them, but brought back in her report where she reports these high-dollar spending that puts it on the record and lets everybody know what's going on too. But that way, we're not holding up paying what needs to be paid.
Have we actually held anybody up? Has anybody called and went for it done?
No. I bring it to you in plenty of time.
And it's...
I try to bring it to you in time so that I don't run into that.
We have two meetings scheduled a month. There shouldn't be any problem with getting something paid. And as far as bringing it back to a meeting, that's a consent form which we gloss over. We don't do, unless you have a specific question, we don't talk about it. I don't think that's being open and transparent.
I would disagree that if it's posted online for five days prior to the meeting, everybody has a chance to look at it, both the council, me as the mayor, or whoever the mayor is, plus the residents. I mean, I'm not sure why it's not considered open and transparent. Everybody has access to it. Who doesn't have access to it?
Everybody has access to it, but I think it should be brought up and talked in front of the council and discussed here, at least mentioned. To me, that's being open and transparent. Saying it's over here, and if you go find it, it's right there. We'll tell you where it is. It's not being open and transparent. That's being, it's, I just didn't have it here. That's just my thoughts. That's my personal thought. Open and transparent, period.
Well, I think part of Angie's goal over the next couple of months is to get us to a point where we can do the transparency star, correct? Where all those financials would be available to the public anyway, right?
Right. We've got to get through the audit first.
Absolutely, but I'm just saying...
Once we get that audit done, then we're free and clear to go.
Yeah, I'm just saying, looking long-term, instead of continuing to handcuff you on some stuff, I would rather show you that I trust you.
Angie, when you do that, when we go for the transparency star, does that presuppose that basically the checkbook gets published online with limitations, of course?
No, not necessarily. It would be like the report that I give you on the bills that we pay. And a lot of that stuff may have to be redacted, because if it has to do with refunds on utility bills, that's confidential information. I can't put that out, so there'll be some redaction on it because I'm required to do that. So, but for vendors, our normal vendors that we pay every month?
But is that published on the web? Can that be published on the website for all to see? Not the stuff that needs to be redacted, but just maybe the higher-end, you know, the big-ticket items?
It will be, you know, as soon as we do the transparency when we start that.
So that does assume that, okay.
But it's easier just to do the report like we're doing now. It'll just take a redaction of certain things, and that's really not any big deal, because people don't want their utility, they don't want their name and their address out there. And some of them have signed a confidentiality request, so.
I think that major concern might be, if I'm right, is the big-ticket items. Is that right, Roger?
Well, if they are, I bring them, I have to bring them to you.
Not, not above, I mean...
I think we're at fifteen thousand dollars? I have no problem. I just didn't leave it where it is myself. We've had too many years, and I'm not talking last three or four years, I'm talking last forty years, one, two people knowing what's going on, one or two people making decisions. I just want it out here where all six of us are discussing it with the staff. That's my only concern. I don't think Angie's going to go spend forty-nine thousand dollars tomorrow on something we don't need. I trust her completely. I trust her with this. It's just appearance to me of being open and transparent. A lot of cities and government issues do not want to be open and transparent. A lot of cities and government issues do not want to be open and transparent, and that's why I believe we do. That's why we should make sure we are.
To move forward with dissenting counsel for guidance, sir, am I allowed to poll? On something like this for, on a discussion item to see what our way ahead is?
I think you can, just on who would be interested in going forward, and maybe if anyone has recommendations on what they would like to see. Moving forward, just to give staff and myself direction on what we can bring to you, if anything, if there is an interest, what we can bring to you at the next meeting.
Right now being split, the council's different, different opinions, so to, off what Lindsay said. I can ask the five and. Try to come up with some type of staff.
Sure, you're not taking action, you're just asking who wants to move forward with it.
Okay.
So before you do, can I throw something out at you?
Yes, ma'am.
So annual budgeted items that you know about, like the Axon cameras, the tasers. The radios, or whatever they have through Axon, that you know every year have to be paid, and they're in the budget. Some of those are, I guess, about twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars for those payments, which is above mine, but it's in the budget. So what, what if you just let me pay what's already been approved by you in the budget? And that will eliminate, because those are annual payments that you've already approved. You know how much it's gonna be. You've approved for them to purchase it. Same way with the fire department. They have an annual payment of forty thousand dollars a year to make on their fire engine. You know it's there, it's been there, it's gonna be for, there for the next several years. So that is an annual payment. I'm, I'm thinking of more of things that are brand-new. That aren't in the budget, that are not budgeted, that might need to be taken care of. Would that be helpful?
That makes sense. That makes a lot of sense, because what you're basically saying, I think, is we got, something happens at the wastewater treatment plant. We need to spend fifty thousand and one dollar to fix it. That would be something that you would then.
Well, and, well, we did have an issue like that on one seventy-one, where.
But the rest of the stuff, we're gonna already know about, because it's already gonna be in the budget.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
But the things you've already approved in the budget, that you know we're gonna pay annually, those kind of things. That you've already approved and committed to them with a contract, that's gotta be paid. And sometimes you have some stuff that's on auto pay, that I didn't know you had on auto pay. So. That, that the prior council had already approved. So it's coming out, you know?
Well, that's kind of what I wondered. I mean, if the budget's atomized, why are you having to bring back what we've already approved in the budget? While you're having to come back and ask us a second time. So to me, in my opinion, if it's already budgeted in the budget, and we've already approved it. You should not have to come back again, because it's over fifteen, and ask us for permission a second time to pay it. So I'm, I'm with you, but anything new and additional that's not in the budget, it should come before council.
Well, it would have to, because I'd have to bring it to you anyways to tell you what the issue is, or, you know, if we had a water break, or. Thank goodness, when the air conditioner went out, you know, it was under ten thousand dollars, so. But, but I let you know what had happened, you know? To me, that was a big deal, but it was under my purchasing price, so.
There was also a couple of things the council approved the purchase of that had to come back and get re-approved for the issuing of the check also.
Yes, that's why it, yeah, I had to issue the check for it.
Shouldn't be addressing things twice.
Yeah.
And Lindsay, the original, I'm pretty sure the original deal was the purchasing policy manual is where we set that rate, so. That would, might help with the ordinance or whatever, I guess.
So we would just amend that, that purchasing policy?
The resolution to that, that's what it was.
Okay.
So Councilmember Yarborough, what's your thoughts on the way ahead?
I, I like Angie's idea. That's about it.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Same, I like that. Anything that's in the budget already currently budgeted for you, you don't have to come back and ask for it again. Anything outside of that, then. Anything over fifteen that's already set, then, then you'll bring it back to us.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, I think that's a good compromise.
I'm not, my, my thought is. There's a whole lot of things in here that I've looked at this thing over and over, and I still don't know everything. If I've got a, we'll go along with that proposal maybe, if, when you do make those payments, it's talked about in the city council. If you have a budget item, you paid it during the week or during the month, your report states inside here that you've made those payments. I'd, I'd go for that. That way everybody knows those payments have been made, they've already been approved. I don't want it where they, if they want it, they can go find it. I really don't care for that phrase. I just want people, I want to be able to talk about our, what we spend money on inside here.
Okay.
So you're saying on the.
On your report?
On your report, you paid fire department or fire truck forty thousand and.
Well, is it sufficient in the list of what's been paid, because you get a copy of that? It'll be in that, yeah.
While we have, if, 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 while we get some possible discuss in the meeting.
Councilmember Hodges?
I'll go along with the budget approvals and then anything over the fifteen.
So the guidance to staff is to come back with a proper documents to approve the city administrator to pay items that are in, approved in the budget?
In any amount, or whatever amount is already budgeted, or are we capping that at the fifty thousand?
What's in the budget?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever.
And then anything additional outside of the budget that's over, so it's still the fifteen thousand dollar cap for anything that's unbudgeted?
Yes, ma'am. Any further comments, council? Item C, discussion on S. B. eleven forty-five adding eleven point three six to Texas Tac Co- Tax Code for Childcare Centers. Ms. Grobs?
Lindsay's actually gonna take over on this. Here you go, Lindsay.
Short and sweet. It's been, staff contacted me because the city was contacted by someone who owned a daycare facility, asking about a potential tax exemption. That the city is allowed to give daycare facilities on their property taxes. So in this last legislative session, the legislature added section eleven point three six to the tax code, which allows you. As a municipality, to offer a potential tax exemption on qualified daycare facilities. And you can, if you choose to allow that, it is a minimum of a fifty percent tax exemption. It can be up to a hundred percent. You can choose anywhere in between that, but essentially, they were just asking if that was an option in Godley. Currently, it's not. You haven't adopted it. And so staff wanted to bring that to your attention, to see if that was something that you may be interested in adopting or not. And if you are, we can kind of walk through the, the steps of that, but it'll be similar to the tax exemptions that you have adopted earlier in the year related to. What do we do with the homestead exemptions? Yes.
So what are the qualifying factors that makes them exempt for that?
So under, under the section eleven point three six, a qualifying childcare facility. Means that they, the owner or the operator participates in the Texas Workforce Commission's Texas Rising Star Program. And that at least twenty percent of the total number of the children enrolled in that facility. Are receiving subsidized childcare services through the Texas Workforce Commission. So there is a formal application process. The comptroller's office, I believe, has a formal application that they would have to provide, that, that gives all this information, that has to prove to you that they meet. All the qualifications for the tax exemption. So just because you grant it, and then whatever a percentage you choose, doesn't mean that every single daycare facility would necessarily qualify for that. They have to meet the standards in the statute.
Who will maintain those? Is there a reporting requirement that you're aware of at present, or is it a one-time deal?
I'm not sure about that. I'd have to check with, I think the, the comptroller's office is responsible for a lot of that, so I haven't looked into what that looks like. I'm sure there is similar to the homestead exemptions.
And that was my other question. Does our staff have to, have to, because I read through it, and there's quite a lot of, of qualifications. Does our staff, our staff doesn't have to deal with that, it's gonna be the comptroller.
So your, the staff would receive the application, and the application would show whether or not they, they qualified for it, because essentially, I think it's. It asks these specific questions, and they have to answer it.
Who checks that their answers are right or they're lying?
I don't, that's a good question. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, on who's responsible for that. This is very new. This was just implicated in January of this year.
I would assume it would be our, our folks, wouldn't it?
Most of it would probably come through the city.
I would think it would go through the tax assessor's office. But if the services are administered by the Texas Workforce Commission, wouldn't they send us a report on that? Because it would be, it would, their program. So I would think that they would have to keep us apprised on a regular check, because what if they do it one time, and then all of a sudden that falls off?
Sure, so there may be some sort of system that they have set up that you can check through. Like Angie said, if it goes through the tax assessor's office, I'm sure they have access to be able to verify that information. But that's something that I can look into for further exactly what this would look like.
Who inspects the facility would be nice to know.
Who determines whether or not it qualifies? Sure.
Yeah.
Do we know how many properties we're talking about? Potential.
I, I don't know. We, we just, I think we were just approached by one facility owner. So I don't, but I don't know currently how many facilities are in the city limits.
I noticed some of these are home-based as well. It, it allows for home-based daycares, which. That could get into a mess if we're the ones who have to go out there and inspect the property or what.
But I don't think they would be allowed to have a homestead exemption and then a tax exemption.
Correct.
I don't know. Is that true?
You know, I would, I wouldn't think you could have both, especially on something like that, because there's some people that buy a house and turn it into a daycare.
I don't know if the homestead exemption is fifty percent, though.
I mean, but they don't live there. They just use the house, you know, as a facility. So long as they're not getting a homestead exemption there, I wouldn't.
But there were provisions in here for, for individuals who. Property's not ineligible for exemption or this section if a portion of the property is used for functions other than those described. And then there was another that dealt with you as someone actually living there, I thought. Yeah, so anyway, let's find out who does what.
Okay.
If we can, it would be mine.
The regulatory authority.
Are we licensed daycare centers in the town now? How many do we have licensed?
Well, they're licensed by the state.
We have a, we have an inspection permit for them, don't we?
Yeah, well. We start that, we, we're gonna bring that to you probably at the, closer to the end of the year to start that, January one. You've put that in your fee schedule, and we have that with Eurovertoes. But we've got to initiate it and get, and kind of get everything ready. That'll also go for. Health inspections. And, and daycare facilities as well. So. That's just our next step on adding that to our permitting process, because we have to adopt the health code first. And we want to have a ti- enough time to notify the businesses of what we're doing as well.
Is it an easy find to see how many licensed daycares are within the city limits?
We can try to, but right now, you, we don't, there's no requirement for businesses to register. We're ma- we're doing that now. We're starting that, but we didn't have any record of what businesses were here.
But enough, but enough county was tracking it also.
They're, they're inspected by the state. And we did have one recently want, asked for me to sign some paperwork as a sanitarian for the city, and I'm not a sanitarian for the city. I mean, I'm not an inspector, I'm not a health inspector, and that's what that is, and I couldn't sign up on that. So that's why we're going towards having V. V. do that, because they do that, and we need to have those inspections here.
Come back with answers to the questions before we move forward?
I'd like to know a little bit, I'd like to know some more details about the program.
I would too. I'd like to know who the regulatory authority is over the whole thing, and who's gonna do the reporting. Who's gonna keep track of all that, make sure it's not gonna fall on our staff to. To do all that.
How often they're gonna require the facilities to report, if it's once or yearly or whatever?
I would just assume that they would probably have to get all of their paperwork together through the workforce commission, those kind of things, and then they make their application. Like they would with any other exemption.
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense.
With the tax assessor.
Sure.
Technical assistance bulletin three oh four from workforce development division will answer every question you guys are asking right now.
What was that again, sir?
Technical assistance bulletin three oh four, workforce development division, will answer most of those questions. It's not citing, it does not have the specific code, but it has a lot of those that they keep.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions on the, the guidance from the council?
I'll have to pass that on to the legal part, and then we'll look and see how many we have, because I'm, I, I can't answer that, I don't know.
Moving on to items of community interest, there is not anything listed. Is council aware of anything? All right, then. We have no executive session for tonight. Is there any further business? Meeting is adjourned at seven nineteen P. M.
We might even get to a point where we only have to debate one of them.
I'm hoping.
Yeah. Yes, sir, how are you?